Regular meeting for city council. Today is Monday, August 26, 2022, pursuant to government code section 54953E. Members of the daily city council and staff will participate in this meeting via teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch the video via live stream on the city's YouTube channel or the city's agenda website at www.dailycity.org/agendas. Now we go ahead and call for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, oops. All right, and Ms. City Clerk, can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Ray Ventura.
Present.
Ms. De Giovanni.
Present.
Ms. Manalo. Mr. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, present.
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Rod.
President. Okay, we have one presentation proclaiming week of October 9 through 15, 2022, as National Fire Prevention Week. We have Sean Kavanoff, Deputy Fire Chief of North County Fire Authority. Oh, to receive this, so here's the proclamation. So we have National Fire Week, whereas the city of Daly City and North County Fire Authority are committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Daly City. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas, according to the National Fire Protection Association at home, the place people feel safest from fire is where they are at greatest risk. And whereas, when a fire, when a home fire does occur, it more likely to be serious, people are more likely to die in a home fire today than they were in 1980. And whereas, 74% of US fire deaths occur in homes. And whereas, making sure your home escape plan meets the needs of all your family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. And whereas, Daly City residents should install smoke alarms inside every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, on every level of your home. And whereas, Daly City residents should know two ways out of every room, if possible. Make sure all windows, all doors and windows opens easily. And whereas, Daly City residents should identify an outside meeting place, a safe distance from your home where everyone should meet. And whereas, Daly City residents should identify an outside meeting place as a safe distance from your home where everyone should meet. And whereas, Daly City residents should practice a home fire drill at least twice a year with everyone in the household, two included a day and night drill. And whereas, fire won't wait. Plan your escape is the 2022 National Fire Prevention Week, theme which reinforces the critical importance of developing home escape plan with all the members of the household and practicing it regularly. Now therefore, I, Rod Dos McWall, Mayor and the Mayor's members of the city council do hereby proclaim October 9 through the 15th, 2022, as National Fire Prevention Week throughout the city. And we urge all the people of Daly City to be aware of their surroundings. Look for available ways out in the event of a fire or other emergency. Respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of North County Fire Authority and emergency services during National Fire Prevention Week 2022. And we have Sean Kavanoff, Deputy Fire Chief from North County Fire Authority, here with us. If you would like to share some more.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you guys recognizing Fire Prevention Week coming up here in October. As you stated in the proclamation, the theme this year is fire won't wait, please plan your escape. And there's two action items that are nationwide with this year's Fire Prevention Week. And that is make the first Saturday of every month, smoke alarm Saturday or any alarms you have in your home to check and make sure they're working properly, make sure they're functioning properly. Check, check the batteries, make sure your batteries are correct. So that's one action item. The second action item is this year that is out is to plan your escape. And that is to have escape, escape plans for your family for out of your home. So it doesn't matter if it's a fire or if it's a natural disaster or so forth. Plan with your family to have an escape route, meeting points, have available resources to you that you may need to take out of your home, be that clothes, food, however that is, and have a meeting point, have that known to all your family members. Have additional, if you have additional family members you can reach out to for a place to meet if that happened. So this year, those are the two items that are the action items for Fire Prevention Week. Like we said, it's fire won't wait, so plan your escape. And we appreciate the Mayor and the council for recognizing the proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Kavanoff. I know we have some words from our council, so council member Pamela De Giovanni.
Yeah, I know. I like all the words that the Mayor said because it was, gave a lot of information, but a very important information. It was really well detailed, Mayor. And that, would you mind, Mr. Kavanoff, to go through the part that I remember learning that people don't realize that if there's a fire, maybe you could do the better with the scenario in the hallway to make sure that you shut, you're on the inside of the door. Because of the oxygen, you shut the door while you're inside. Most people think you should open the door and try to escape through. And would you mind going over that? Because I know that a lot of people have lost their lives in incidents like that.
That is correct. So if you're in that situation, what happens is what, what does fire need? What is the number one thing fire needs? Needs sort of those two things. It needs fuel and it needs oxygen, correct? So when oxygen is introduced to a fire, or more oxygen is introduced to a fire, that creates the combustion, it creates more fire to be going. So if you're in that situation, yeah, you're correct. Close the door. You don't want to open, open up to outside hallway where you're introducing fire either into the room you're in or introducing more oxygen into, into the hallway as you're staging. If you're in that situation, try to get to a window, get out the window if you can, or any other escape route you have to get out of that room. So you're on the correct, the correct path of what you're saying, council member.
Yeah, because I was a little like trying to think, people trying to get out and you have to stay low because of the, the smoke, right? Because the first thing that really kills people is the smoke inhalation, right?
Yeah, that is correct. If you're in that situation too, though, if you can get out, even if the smoker's in, if the smoker is low enough or high, get low, as low as you can and crawl, crawl as fast as you can, but keep low to the ground where there's oxygen still. So that's, that's everything too that you want to try to.
Is it mandatory in new developments to make sure that they have the sprinkler systems?
Yes, most new construction, it depends on, on the areas that you're in throughout the state. It's not like that throughout every community. Just depends on if there's ordinances around your community or not. If you, if you're, if your new construction and homes have to be sprinkled or not. It just depends on through the ordinances.
Okay, so yeah, maybe we could look into that, Mayor, if, if we don't have one. And I thank you for all you do. There's not enough words. Firefighter's daughter here, I know people tired, might get tired here, but never for me because it's something that stays with you forever. And if you can share the information with other people, that's what you do. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
We appreciate the support.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Are there any other comments from my colleagues? Seeing that Deputy Chief Kavanoff, thank you for accepting the proclamation. Just a message for all those at home. I think this is a time to not take things for granted, especially now that fire seasons come along and weather is very unpredictable. And also, you know, you can never ever plan for, you got to be able to plan for different potential accidents that might happen. So I encourage everyone to set those plans. And I plan to talk to my family about that, maybe tomorrow.
Perfect.
Yes, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along here, we have approval minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting of September 12, 2022?
Motion to approve the minutes?
Got it. First, can I get a second? I'll go ahead and second that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay.
Mayor, before you go on to approval of the agenda, make a comment and bring something to light.
For sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm bringing this up now because I know there are a lot of people who are attendees and panelists on this council meeting. And I think the public should know that earlier today, there has been an allegation of an assault on a fellow council member. That council member who was allegedly assaulted was hospitalized today. I'm grateful to see that she's on the Zoom. But I have some concerns about proceeding with a meeting where we now have two council members in direct conflict with each other. And whether or not we can proceed with agendized items that I think could call into question the legitimacy of our decisions, given the state of the current council at this moment. My initial thought was to continue this entire meeting to another day when some of these issues are dealt with, are known, are investigated, whatever. But I understand in talking to staff that there are pressing issues on the agenda that need to be decided quite expeditiously. So with that, what I am proposing is we just consider those items that need to be decided, that are non-controversial, and that the rest of the items, we move to another day when we can decide them together legitimately. I do have concerns about making decisions when perhaps only three of the council members can weigh in. And so I know that Ms. Manalo is on here. So I would propose that if, on the consent agenda, if there is nothing that any of the council members want to pull, then we, we can pass that. And with respect to the, if, if one council member wants to pull it, that's fine. And then we can continue that so that Ms. Manalo can weigh in. I don't think she's in any condition to debate and discuss the items that are before the council, given what I have heard and what has happened. So I'd like to give her the opportunity to weigh in and decide whether or not she is in any way able to participate in the decision-making process on any of the items or whether or not she would prefer to continue some of these items as courtesy and also out of necessity. So I'd like, Mayor, hopefully you can give her the floor and see what she says.
I think you're right on. Vice Mayor, I will give Councilmember Justin Manalo the floor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, Mayor Dos McWall, for the opportunity to speak on dais this evening. I am distraught because council member De Giovanni assaulted me in City Hall. And you're correct, this evening. I would like to have some items continued so I could be present because at this hidden juncture, I'm still very much traumatized by the incident. I'd like to have some items continued. Thank you for the floor, Mr. Mayor.
See, another hand up here. Councilmember Pamela De Giovanni.
Thank you. I appreciate my being able to speak as well. I vehemently deny that I did anything to assault and that all this is politically motivated because I would never do such a thing to anyone. As much as I've been bullied over these past few months, have had public comments made about me, supporters, of colleagues, I would never, and they know it, would ever do such a thing. So I vehemently deny it, and it is politically motivated. Thank you. It's not me. It's alleged. Never happened. Thank you.
With that, can I table, I was going to ask Rose for some guidance here. Is there ways I can like table some items, like in a consent agenda items for next time?
So we have several items. When you say table, Mr. Mayor, are you looking to pull some items to not have a vote this evening?
Yes.
Because we can certainly do that, or if there's some items on this agenda, as mentioned by Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Ray Ventura can be voted on. So you can certainly pull some items to be considered for continuance. A continuance would mean you'd have a date certain, table would mean it would be indefinite. And you can certainly do that.
Got you. Okay. Councilmember Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am. I'm in much pain right now. The reason why I'm on here is to be able to push for a continuance of some items. I had to go to the hospital. I went to Sedan Hospital. And I will not be silent. And I will not be silent because no one should have ever be assaulted. And I will stand firm because never in my professional or personal life have I ever been treated in this manner. This abuse needs to stop. I will be silent no longer.
We're hopping on. I know we have a long meeting, so I'd like to ask for continuance on item number three.
Okay.
For next time. And I think that's like an issue that I would like to have all of my colleagues have voice on.
Okay.
Yeah. I think everything. Yes. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I know I have Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking at the consent calendar and I concur for item number three. Actually, third, the motion. There are a couple of items that I think is very important and not to say any of these items are lesser of importance, but item number five, I think, to commend the person on his retirement would not have to go, to be held off. Excuse me. Item number eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, and 13. We've been in negotiations and tentative agreements have been made. And I don't think we'll have any qualms with us moving ahead and approving those items. So that's my thought. And lastly, item number four, this is a time sense, well, even though it's a time-sensitive matter, I think to put it off would not really detract or jeopardize anything. So just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. Councilmember Pamela De Giovanni.
I agree that we should, if that's the items you wish to do that, and the other ones are for the agreements, for the employment. Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so I know we haven't got to down to consent agenda, but I'm asking for continuance for item number three. And number five, we will pull. And so with that, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
The consent agenda.
Oh, consent agenda, sorry.
Approve the consent agenda?
Yeah, I'll just go ahead and second that. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right. So we will go straight to number five. Is that correct, Rose?
Actually, just for formality, can we have a motion to, there is a motion on the floor to continue. Can we just have a voice vote on item number three? And for continuance, Mr. Mayor, are we looking to a date certain to the next council meeting?
I would say the next council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
That's the motion through you.
Yes. So the motion to continue item number three to the next. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 And you can pull item number five.
Pull item number five. All right. All right, so we'll go to item number five, which is to commend Jose Correa on the occasion of his retirement. And I know he's in attendance. Jose, how's it going on, man?
Jose, you?
Doing all right. I think before we talk, I think we have some of my colleagues that I would like to give you some praise and your flowers. I think if we were there, I would have gave you some bouquet of flowers. Forgot it. And so we'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jose, I have known you well for a couple of years now. And in reading your history as to where you've been elsewhere, what caught my eye was begrudgingly you were assigned to City Hall. And I think it's a good thing because had you had not been assigned to City Hall, I would not have met you. And I appreciate the conversations we've had before quite often, you know, where we talk about life in general and about cars. And, you know, it just meant so much to me because, you know, given our age, well, I guess I'm older than you, but we can relate. And that really means a lot to me. So I just want to say congratulations on your retirement. You will be sorely missed. I will miss you. And to find out your daughter has the same name as my granddaughter. I mean, it's the little things like that that will go a long way. So I wish you the best. Stay safe, stay healthy, and rest assured, our paths will cross again. Thank you, Jose.
Thank you. Thank you, Glenn. It's been a pleasure knowing you.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester, Councilmember Pamela De Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Jose, we all think we're better because we know you. I know where I am. I know my life is better. Learned a lot from you about life, what counts, what are the life's things that are simple. And it's your health, it's your family, it's your dogs. It's taking walks every day. It's what you take pride in Daly City, in the city of Daly City. It's the youth that you mentored. I don't know if people really realize that even when he was ever in Bay Shore, so many youth have you mentored. Even when I say that someone has passed, a young person, you knew them. You mentored them, and it's a loss to you. So worse, there's not enough. And, you know, they say people are replaceable, but I don't think so. And I look forward to seeing you out of, from, when you're out and you're out doing your walks at your park with your family, your dogs, and relaxed, and the great attitude you have. And you show nothing but love and respect to everyone you meet. So those are the great things and many more, and always wishing you the best. So certainly a blessing in my life. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor. Grateful.
You, Councilmember Pamela De Giovanni, Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Jose, I just want to say thank you from that moment you shared with me that you were going to retire. I mentioned that we needed to do something special for you, and I'm glad that we have this proclamation on here because up and down the city, the importance of our workers and the value you have given to our community and from our conversations, the real conversations you bring forth. I just want to wish you a wonderful retirement and well-deserved, well-deserved. God bless you in your next chapter. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Manalo, Vice Mayor Ray Ventura.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jose, I will just always remember you as the person who was always there. And sometimes I'd be there late and I hear some noise and I just, I knew it was you, and it was comforting actually to know that there was somebody else there, and it was actually you. So it was just a nice feeling having you around. And the way you did your job, man, it was like you were so diligent and you were there late and you were just all about your business and just kept that place so, so spotless. And it's really appreciated. I know how hard you work, and so you deserve some rest, man. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Jose, I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. As a person that came into council, you know, you're the unspoken heroes of Daly City. You know, we go to these council meetings, we do speeches, we attend these meetings. But it's the background people that people never see, the unsung heroes, the people behind the scenes, and you're definitely the person that's behind the scenes that after long meetings, you know, and long stressful meetings, I would see you and we will chop it up and, you know, it'll make my, my drive home a little bit softer, a little bit more, less heavy because we got to check in. And I'm always going to remember this, we had our League of One voter candidate forum last week. And I was telling you, I was like, man, I don't know why I feel nervous. And you're like, man, you got this, dude. And I, and I was like, yeah, I think I just needed to hear that. And I'm going to miss your presence at City Hall, but I'm pretty sure we'll see you around the way. We have, we share some mutual friends, so I'm glad to have known you. And hopefully one day we'll, we'll kick it and just, I don't know, just chop it up outside of City Hall. Yeah, so I just want to give you my virtual flowers to you. And if you, and I want to give you the microphone and the space to say your piece and your, and your service and everything. and your service and everything that you did for Daily City. Just want to say thank you. So Jose, if you want, if you have anything to say, this is um, your time, your space.
Well, I just, I'd like to thank everybody at City Hall, my bosses included, and all you guys, the council. It's been a pleasure working with you. Shout out to Rose, beautiful lady. It's always been a blessing here and hopefully everybody come to terms and be at peace and it's time to rock on. Shout out to you too, Tom. Enjoy your time here and it's time to walk out and enjoy the rest of life. Thank you all and thanks for the blessing.
Thank you so much, Jose. All right, man. Oh, Tom, I don't know if you want to say anything. Or Rose, if you want to say anything.
I, just very briefly, um, it's been about seven weeks and, and uh, getting to know Jose in the evenings late here at night, it's, it's, it's good to see someone when I'm here alone and I, I share those sentiments as well. But I've had some real deep, meaningful conversations with him and I appreciate that. And uh, and I'll take that all with me and I take it to heart and it's going to help me with the rest of my career. So thank you. And enjoy yourself and we'll see you soon.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me.
Of course. Thank you, um, Mr. Berikalati. Rose, if you want to say anything as well, I'll give you the, no?
Sure. I don't usually say a lot, but uh, I see Jose, I think every night. Uh, and it is a pleasure. We do have some nice conversations. One thing Jose always says, don't work too late, life's too short. So I will take that to heart. Enjoy your, enjoy your retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Rose. Thank you, Jose.
Thanks, guys.
All right. All right, so proceeding to um, the next agenda item, that's end of, end of the consent agenda. Next is item number fourteen, response to the San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury Report.
Well.
The other, oh, yes.
So this is where I think that we should um, continue uh, all these items. But um, I think the one that was mentioned that was most pressing was the um, the second reading of the the second reading ordinance, item number sixteen. So I think we should continue item um, fourteen and fifteen, and we just proceed with sixteen. And I don't know if that was what uh, Councilmember Manalo was thinking, but maybe you could, we can give her the floor.
Yeah, um, yeah, I just need some clarification. So I'll go ahead and Councilmember Manalo.
They, thank you very much. Um, I'm really trying to uh, push through this um, right now. I'm in a lot of pain. And so um, I um, request my uh, colleagues if we can um, continue item uh, fifteen. And item uh, item fifteen if possible and fourteen.
I second that.
Actually, for clarification, if I may, um, um, item sixteen is the second reading of the um, Kimco project. Item fourteen is a grand jury report. Are we looking at item fifteen for the developer selection? And item sixteen for the second reading? Does that sound accurate?
No, I think what was said was we want to continue item fourteen and item fifteen. And we do, and, and the only one we hear is item sixteen.
Okay, which is the second reading. So continue the grand jury report for item fourteen, item fifteen, and then continue and then take on the item sixteen this evening.
That's my understanding.
Okay. Okay, for purposes of process so that we just have it on the record, um, we are looking to continue this to a date certain. If, is that my understanding? And that would be the next council meeting of October. October tenth? Does that sound accurate?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, so by way of motion, if we can have a motion for item number fourteen for a continuance uh, to the next regular meeting of October tenth. And we have a motion for the mayor.
So move.
And we have a, a second. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Uh, point of order, in calling the question, can we uh, um, I, I just hear one item. So the motion is to um, put aside to a date certain, which would probably be the next council meeting. Item number fourteen and fifteen. Is that correct?
Um, we, I think for, uh, for purposes of process, we'll take each motion so that we can log it for the record.
Got you.
I think right now we do have the motion on the item fourteen.
Okay, my vote is aye.
Okay. So that passes for a continuance. And then I have item number fifteen, which is the developer selection. Um, and my understanding is that there is a motion to continue this to a date certain, which would be the next regular meeting of October tenth. If we can take that vote, Mayor.
And it was, that was my motion, correct?
Yes, through you.
I, okay. And do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, also for clarification, um, I have been informed that you did not vote on uh, Mr. Correios's resolution, if we can have that vote for the record as well, which is item number five.
Yes. I'll go ahead.
Glenn Sylvester, I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, and so we are on to item number sixteen.
Great. Okay, item number sixteen. So item sixteen is the second reading ordinance number one, four, five, nine. Amending the zoning map, plan development standards, PD dash sixty B dash Westlake. And I'll hand it over to you, um, Rose.
Okay, thank you. Um, this item came before the council, it was an introduction ordinance of number fourteen fifty-nine. Amending the Plan Development Standards, PD sixty B, known as Westlake. This is the second reading for adoption by roll call vote. I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if there is any public comment with regards to this that we would have to take before the vote.
I see Councilmember Manalo's hand up. Um, so Councilmember Manalo, if you'd like to um, recognize your hand there.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to say uh, thank you for allowing the continuance of the other items. Um, and um, at this juncture, I will be exiting the meeting um, and uh, um, appreciate it and and great pain and will have the rest now. And so thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Manalo. Um, rest well and see you next time. Councilmember Pamela Digiwani.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Rose, um, because of the first reading, the second reading, because I live so close. Um, Mr. Mayor, I believe I have to recuse myself for the item.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right. Um, so we're at um, public, um, can I get a motion? Oh, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I guess uh, you were going down that path. I was about to make a motion. But I'll make the motion to open up to public hearing at this time.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. I'll go ahead and second that. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, so Leilani, I'll hand it over to you.
For those members of the public who wish to comment on this item, please click the raise hand feature to speak on this item. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. Okay, it looks like we have three hands. When you hear your name called, you will receive a request to unmute your microphone and you may begin speaking. Each person will receive a maximum of two minutes to speak. When your two minutes have been reached, please wrap up your comments. Speakers on a compliance will be muted. Any use of profanity will result in the speaker being muted immediately. Okay, first, uh, we have two hands raised now, um, the last being a call-in user, and first, we have Tom. Tom Nerd.
Hello.
Hi, we can hear you.
Great. I don't know how to uh, get them, uh, the video to go, but if you can hear me, uh, good evening and uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor and esteemed uh, members of the council for allowing me to address you tonight in favor of this project. I think I, I wrote you the last time it came on, uh, extending my support for it. Uh, I also, you know, live uh, not exactly close to it, but close to Westlake, having grown up here. Uh, having seen that land as a bowling alley used so often and then as a store and then having seen it now empty uh, for so long. I think uh, all of us uh, are, are looking forward to uh, a, a very dynamic use of that property, which will bring uh, needed housing, also commercial. Uh, and uh, it, it has a lot of the features that I think will enhance our community and enhance Westlake. And uh, because of that, I, I want to encourage you to uh, uh, move forward on this project. And uh, I, I, I'm happy that we have good projects like this coming before our city. Uh, and this is what we need to do to continue to grow. And uh, I, I support it. And that's really all I wanted to say. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have a call-in user. Press star six to unmute.
Hello, um, so first of all, I did see a public comment in number three. I don't know if you've already adopted the resolution. The caution against racial, yeah, racial exploitive, non-emergency stuff. Um, but with regards to this one, I do want to comment again on Westlake. Um, I think it would be a really big mistake in building this property out. Simply because there's actually one lane going out of Westlake. And you know, I thought, we actually, we thought about it the other day. Um, Safeway, I think it's open to eleven or twelve. Uh, I think Home Depot's open to like ten. So it's going to be still congested and um, got to be noise, meaning the noise factor is going to be there too as well. Um, I don't know, I mean, do you want to build uh, uh, more business down there rather than units? Because rush hour traffic is going to be a pain too. So um, yeah, if you could clarify, number three, I think I sent an email over on the earlier, but number three on the resolutions would really work out. Because I think it's required to have public comment on it, if, if I'm not mistaken. Thanks, bye.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes public comment.
All right, I'm going to motion to close. Oh, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to close the public hearing at this time.
I'll go ahead and second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we move forward with the um, second reading uh, and approval of this project.
Okay, um, I would also just open it up for comments if there's any comments. And if there isn't, we'll go ahead and proceed. Okay, seeing none, um, there's a motion on the floor to adopt ordinance. Um, I'll go ahead and second. Second that, and if we can get a roll call vote, please, Mr. City Clerk.
Mr. Brian Ventura.
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Dr. Rod.
Aye. So the motion has passed this. Thank you, everyone. And then Councilmember Pamela Digiwani, welcome back to the meeting.
I had to recuse myself because I live three hundred feet. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Got you. Next up is public appearance and oral communications. I'll hand it back to you, Leilani.
Thank you, Mayor. In accordance with the Brown Act laws governing regular meetings, the city council is not authorized to speak to or take action on any other items in this meeting. Members of the public who wish to comment may click the raise hand feature to raise your hand to speak. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. It is important to note that staff will announce the name of the last person whose hand was raised upon calling for public comment. And that person will be the last verbal comment. If any additional speakers queue up after the last called speaker, the mayor may continue to allow public comment if time allows. Otherwise, public comment may be emailed to cityclerk@dailycity.org to be added to the record and shared with the city council. When you hear your name called, staff will send you a request to unmute your microphone and you may begin speaking. Each person will receive a maximum of two minutes to speak and may only speak once. When your two minutes have been reached, we ask that you wrap up your comments. Speakers on a compliance will be muted. Any use of profanity will result in the speaker being muted immediately. I see a total of three hands, all of which are joining by phone. Please press star six to unmute.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
My name is Brian Shields and I'm a field representative for Carpenter's Local Two Seventeen that covers San Mateo County. Tonight, I want to speak to you about the need for labor standards. Standards that will secure the working class place here in Daily City. Apprenticeship, healthcare, local hire, and a livable wage should be the template developers need to approach Daily City with. I would like to express to you that without such standards, the construction force is systematically abused through wage theft, ten, ten ninety-nine, where workers have no workers' comp when hurt on the job, and a litany of safety violations. The, the language that should become policy here in Daily City would support responsible contractors that are already doing the right thing. By their clients, environments, and employees. These responsible contractors have proven time after time that they can perform to the highest standards. The policy would bolster the working class and cultivate responsible markets for good contractors. This would be a creation of a floor, a minimum bar set for developers that are coming into Daily City. Saying, value our citizens as you build on our land. I would very much like to have a real and valuable conversation with each and every one of you. To answer any questions you might have about labor violations and what standards might look like. Before I go, let me leave you with this question. How can you, as the city council, better support and guard the working people of this growing city? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have another call-in user. Please press star six to unmute.
Hello, yeah, yeah, yeah. So um, today, I'm John Daly. So definitely want to respect my city, respect my town. Um, I can guarantee that the community uh, did not. Um, obviously, there's cameras at City Hall, there's an abundance of cameras to see what occurred. But I'm pretty sure the, the, the community did not have anything to do with that. I, they would definitely have to deal with us if they did. There's no touching, no, no, no um, physical violence. Anyway, so we went to Dreamforce. Keep that dream force feeling alive and meeting all the leaders and the trailblazers and all that good stuff. So the League of Women Voters was really out of line. They should have never, ever had a um, forum for candidates, if two other candidates were not there. So we're looking into that. We need a new forum for all seven candidates. I think that's fair. Every, everybody needs to be held accountable and everybody needs to be heard on uh, candidate issues. And tough candidate issues too. Um, regarding the mental health um, resources, we were the ones that pushed for that. We, the community, have been pushing for a budget for that. So um, we really don't want to hear anybody say anything about how they pushing for that. With regard to Seaton Medical Center, it was purchased by AHMC. So they put up to forty million, they took all the risk. San Mateo County did not, Daily City did not. So they're taking all the risks. San Mateo County did not. Daly City did not. So they're taking all the risk as a private entity, as a private investor. Again, Seaton Medical Center is a disaster if it's true that some of the patients are lying in a state of crisis. With regards to, wow, where am I? With regards to the town hall, we really need that town hall for for us to address the candidates. And the, I think you guys received the emails about the racism, so we need to have that address as well. Every candidate needs to know, every voter needs to know what candidate they're voting for. And then I think I think for, you know, the qualifications for a council person would be 18 years and older registered voter and a resident of Daly City. So that's important to point out too. And I think Warren's available too. So let me see if he's on or I'll translate. Thanks. Bye.
Thank you for your comments. Our next call in user, press star six to unmute. Next speaker, you can press star six to unmute.
All right, he doesn't want to talk. He's, I don't know why. He's a little shy. He doesn't do the Dreamforce like I do. Hey, so anyway, you know, my heart's in the right way, our hearts in the right way. Yeah, but I'm translating for him though.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, I'm translating for him because he's, you know, he's, you know, anyways, long story short. So he wants to work with you guys. He keeps stressing the need to work with you guys on the issues that we've sent over. We still here back and, you know, I mean, you know, Tom, we sent that email back in August, August 31st and now September 26th. So it's been like three, four weeks. We just want to know if you want to work together with us. I mean, we're going to have to campaign with other candidates if you guys don't want to work with us. But our intent is to build a bigger, better, safer Daly City, work with community, work with them on projects, work, I mean, the Arts and Culture Commission is a disaster. There's no videotapes for those artists that want to showcase their art. I mean, my God. You know how the artist must have felt because he doesn't have a platform to showcase his art. So that's a huge problem. And, you know, Mr. Sylvester, I got to tell you, you know, just between you and I, I wanted to be you. I wanted to be a police officer and the badge, the badge, the badge, the oath, the oath, the oath. So, you know, I mean, there's, I really want to work with you on training. I really want to work with you on de-escalation and handshake rather than look for the gun. So I, you know, we, our hearts in the right place are, you know, we want to just do the right thing for the community, but we're just not getting the feedback. We're not getting the cooperation that we desire. And this is our city, right? My city was destroyed years ago, San Francisco in the seventies with Jonestown, Moscone Milk and all those other characters there. So work with us. Let us know. You know, we're here, man. We're, you know, Mr. Allen's death was a disaster. You know, nobody, nobody reached out to the, to the community and we're, we're trying to bridge the gap. Anyway. Hopefully, Justin's okay. We certainly would reach out and we would be, we would help her in any way we can, but we just don't know what happened. Okay, take care. Bye.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, we have two hands following last called speaker.
Let's have them speak.
Okay. Next speaker, we have Karen. Hi Karen, can you hear us? Karen, I see that your microphone is unmuted, but we are unable to hear you. Karen, I'm going to come back to you. I'll go to the next speaker and then see if you're able to connect again. Next, we have Simon.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Simon. Yeah, I am the Western of Daly City. I am also the, an immigrant in the USA for, since 1995. And I have, I have a member of two, two local seventeen or seventeen years. You know, before I joined the union, I worked in a low pay and unstable job. But after I joined the union, my life changed for bad. I have a good pay and stable walk and got the good insurance coverage. Often it's for the union. Union is helping people. They got them rail trading and trading for their safety, the job quickly and move. And that's why I say we, we should have the job for you, union and to do is better to help the city. And thank you for the time. Yeah, and everybody have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Karen.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hallelujah. Okay, my comment, more of a question, a concern is regarding two parcels in Daly City. One is 20 Skyline Drive. The other one's 15 Linville Court. I'm questioning as to when these two parcels may be rezoned to open space. To be consistent with the general plan, I have been speaking with Michael Van Longhousen. And houses, well, were removed numerous years ago. He said maybe 1992. The one on 20 Skyline Drive. And of course, they were removed because of landslideage and whatnot. So they were removed. Of course, Linville Court just flat out fell, but there were houses moved to, moved prior to that. So my question is, we, you know, and the concern of the citizens on this block is those two properties, the 20 Skyline and 50 Linville were not too long ago sold. Now, I was told that the current zoning does not allow building. But what we're trying to do is to get that zoning changed from no, no building allowed to open space. Now, according to Michael Van Longhousen, he said that on Rockford in Daly City, they removed a couple houses as well. And it had the same zoning. Again, no building allowed, but it's, and they wanted to make it open space. But it has not been done yet. So my question is, what, what do we need to do to have this zoning changed? You know, what, what needs to be done? From our viewpoint or how do we get this moving and what's the procedure? To get the zoning, I mean, you know, if there was any building in this guy, you know, the reason I'm concerned, there has been activity being done. Yes.
Hi, sorry, your two minutes have been reached.
Oh, all right. Well, that's the question. How do we get it rezoned? How long does it take? Where do we go to get something happening in this department? That's it?
Thank you for your comments. That concludes public comment.
Next is appointments, board commission appointments. Are there any appointments at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll proceed to the next item. Item number 17, council committee reports. Councilmember Pamela DiGiovanni.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, this will be one of the committee reports combined with something else. Yeah, I attended my commute.org meeting and it coincides with the CCAG, which is the City Council Association of Governments. And at the meeting, Mr. Ford reminded us that the CCAG adopted an ordinance in September 2021. It's called a TDM, Transportation Demand Management Ordinance. And it became effective in January the first in 2022. And the reason I bring it forth to my colleagues tonight and our city manager is the city attorney is that our city has not adopted it yet. And I did try to reach out to Rose, our city attorney on Wednesday, but I knew she was pretty busy at the time and was unable to get it on the agenda. So respectfully asked because the commute.org and CCAG, because it's a countywide ordinance. And it has to do, so for a short explanation for the mayor and my colleagues and city manager and the public. It has to do with if we do go to a new development. The development is 100, probably 100 units or more. And it's a trips demand, like how many count of cars are coming out of there for the trips demand. So that part is the TDM. So I sent the, all the information over to the, to our city attorney and city manager. And respectfully, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind taking a look at it and seeing if we can get it on there on the next one, that'd be really respectful. Secondly, there's a, as we all know, and I think most of us are concerned about the catalytic converter issues in our city, how much it's costing, especially the seniors and those that are, every time they have to pay, every time it's stolen, they have to pay, you know, for their insurance. And I remember Glen Sylvester, council member, had brought this up more than one time and I believe the mayor was concerned as well. I respectfully ask, after having a meeting with some of the citizens, and I know that council member Sylvester, the South San Francisco has adopted an ordinance and it's ORD And what this pertains to, and I gave the copy to our city manager as well, is that it makes it illegal for anybody to be unlawful possession of any used catalytic converters in the city and establishing penalties for violation. And maybe through the mayor and council member and my colleagues, maybe we would like to do stronger ones in South City or whatever. And the chief of South City had said it gave, gave them another tool in their toolbox to try to catch these people by being in possession of something illegally. And I know that council member Sylvester was very much looking into this as well. So I actually respectfully ask that we look into that possibly through the mayor and city manager and council member Sylvester and see what we can do because I know that our, we've been plagued by pretty much a lot of it. So that's for that and I'll wait for the city council reports as well. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me the time. And moving on. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
And thank you, council member Sylvester as well.
All right. Other, other council committee reports? I'll go ahead and share my report out. Let's see my notes here. So I attended the Peninsula Clean Energy Meeting slash Retreat, September 22, 2022. I'm not going to go through everything. But I'll go ahead and just give you the highlight reel. So what we did is that we, as a group, we provided a resolution to delegate authority to our CEO for the purchase and sale of our agreement for Erika, the Arika Solar, Solar LLC, which provides us solar power and it comes from Riverside County. And as a way to be part of our stock hold of solar energy coming into the county and also with Los Baños. We also did an update of the strategic plan that we adopted back in 2022 and there was a few things that just want to highlight is we agreed to move from 100% greenhouse gas to free decarbonization target from 2045 to 2035. And the focus is to, focuses on personal vehicle transportation and small residential building electrification. So like the reach codes. Also providing addition of a separate dashboard and discussion section for account services for our marketing and community relations. And we updated our 2025 targets for community energy programs to reflect current and more, more realistic market conditions going forward. One thing that has been very successful in Daly City are the rebate programs and we've seen a huge interest, especially here in Daly City, North County for e-bikes and electric cars. And also our push to have more infrastructure to have more charging stations throughout the county. So that's it for Peninsula Clean Energy. It was a pretty long meeting. It's about like five hours long. Probably the longest Zoom meeting. No, I can't say that. We had that long meeting. That's time, but that was it for my city for council committee reports. And also, I think I have one more. One more thing is I'd like to also name myself and the vice mayor to for, for the library and rec ad hoc committee meeting, just to move forward and get the conversation started for, you know, moving forward. I know that we've, we've had where the library and rec have been together and just trying to find ways where we can move this conversation forward. And, yeah, and have important discussions moving forward. I think that's it for the city council reports. I mean, council committee reports, sorry about that. Item 17. Item 18, we have any city council reports.
Yes. Looking for my resume.
I'll go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, on the city council reports, I wanted to make sure that everybody knew, I know that it's been a long month and great celebrations. And then most of us, I know the mayor as well, the Latinx heritage was probably like we didn't get a chance because it was so late, the last council meeting, just to say enough great things about a recreation department. What they did, how they celebrated it at Geller Park. And it did bring in a diverse crowd, which is a beautiful thing to see and look forward to more. And it did everything from indigenous to current, which I like that. We have a guy in Daly City, as the mayor heard as well that day that he did the modern Latin pop kind of guy, like a, what would you say, the poetry? And so it was nice to see all the genre and the food, of course, is excellent. And then on Sunday, we had that first annual with the University of Philippines that had to be, they had this great guy, this Filipino artist that had these beautiful cards at a stock that did his own handwriting. He actually had a signature on it and it was one of the cards. So that, and it turned out to be like, like a beautiful painting. And another young Filipino that makes chocolate, his story is they get the chocolate from Mindanao. And he and his father make it. And I thought that was a beautiful thing. And they get that chocolate and they make it like Swiss chocolate. And the name on it is not really a name. He told me it was something that he used to, his child made up like Udali or Udali or something like that. So it's not even a real name, but I thought that was very kind and he has a great story to tell. And I think that people need to promote him and support him as well. Of course, the food was good. And I want to commend the alum because I, it turns out the world is small. My friend Odette, who lives in Burlingame, she's like my sis and I didn't know she attended University of Philippines and she's an alum. And she's in the media. She was there with Liza. And she's in the media. She was there with Liza, Gino, who we all know. And they did a fabulous job and they had great entertainment as usual. And I think they really liked the venue. I think the feedback was great. And of course, the weather was Daly City weather, but of course, the vibe was always great. Um, a lot of people came, Ellen came, we all know her. Um, people came from other counties to participate. And, uh, a lot of people found out about score. They found about, um, all the different things that they can offer and looking forward to the second room. And I know they do a lot of charitable work. And I thought that was to be noted, that their charity is what they're known for. And I think that they share a lot, and I've known Odette for, I don't know, several years, and we had a big discussion on it. And, um, I was very humbled to meet also, uh, the lady Marcia, who is the, uh, Papa. And I was telling her I was Jewish and she was saying that it translates into you don't have to be Asian or whatever. And that she had a great conversation. She's so well educated. There's so much to learn from these people. And, um, so I think Daly City did the right thing by partnering and they were very, very grateful and look forward to, um, next year as well, when we continue partnering and learning more about this and the culture. I think that it's a beautiful thing. And I want to recognize that this is the, it began yes, last year, yesterday, Lashanatava, to all those that celebrate the Jewish New Year, to let people know this is the beginning of Rosh Hashanah. Rosh Hashanah is, is seen as the highest of holidays. And that is like more, y'all, people say Yom Kippur, but that's just like a celebration of children and toys. But people really need to learn more about the culture and that this is the beginning, it's a self-reflection. So that's why it saddens me to hear that anything is politically motivated. And I really adamantly, this are false allegations, because this is the Jewish New Year. And to me, that is very serious. So, um, it saddens to me and that, you know, politics should not play a part of anything. And it's really too bad that this has escalated from people making public comments about me all the way to whatever. So I hope that we can move forward and, and discover what is really right and what is common among us. Just like the, the, all these great events that we're having here in Daly City, which tries to bring people together. So I really appreciate it a lot. Thank you very much. Thanks for the, the time and Lashanatava to all those that celebrate, uh, the Jewish New Year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, last, uh, council meeting we had was actually a very, very long, uh, council meeting. And we put off some items, uh, especially in this particular section for public, uh, uh, comment, um, council committees. I mean, not committee, but council reports. So I just wanted to let you know, I have not forgotten. Uh, I'm hoping that we can, uh, perhaps next council meeting, because I'm going to defer, uh, my topic until then. And basically, what I want to, uh, put out there is I attended a program at Cal Cities, which I think is very important, very important for council, very important for our city and very important for our community. And I would like to speak to the issue because two months ago, as council member Digi Avani brought up, I wanted to establish a task force, a task force to, uh, consider and review uh, catalytic converter thefts and retail thefts. And as we know, it's on the rise. So, um, I'm going to give you the what, the why, the when and the where. And, uh, I'm going to defer, again, defer that till next month. And basically, I'm going to talk about Prop forty-seven, which was, uh, which I attended, uh, at California League of Cities and how we can work, uh, with Prop forty-seven to include catalytic converter thefts and retail thefts. So that's my report and I'll, uh, defer the next month. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember, um, Sylvester. Um, with that, um,
Just real short, I just know that the holidays are coming and retail is really, yeah, you're right. Just as the beginning. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Um, okay. Um, city council reports. Latino Heritage Month was, was a great celebration. Um, it was great to see, um, it come back in person, you know, I know we, we've had it at, um, city hall in years past, but it was really a great vibe having it at Geller Park and, you know, having a captured audience that go to Geller Park and not only their activities, but they were able to come by and um, enjoy the celebrations, the food and all the booths out there on September seventeen. Um, and I'm going out of order, but, um, Daly City, um, the Daly City mural on
Oh, yeah.
My Daly City Mitsubishi. Again, I just want to go ahead and thank, um, the Grisart Jefferson students, Victoria Magbilong, Bay Area Mural Project, Dragonfly. Um, and I think we're going to be able to, hopefully, hopefully, honor them in person, but I just want to give them a quick shout out and hopefully we will see, see them in person. The, you know, like as what council member Pamela Di Giovanni mentioned about, uh, University of Philippines Alumni Association of San Francisco event, um, that happened yesterday. It was a successful event.
Yes.
Um, I just want to say thank you for all the organizers, Lisa, um, Gino and, um, Ben Menor.
Yeah.
All those folks that came out and the artists, all the vendors. Um, I was really, really interested in, in talking to the artists and hopefully, when we're able to start, um, having more events at City Hall, we could bring some of these artists and have them work with the Arts and Culture Commission to come back and maybe we could have some of their art, um, displayed at City Hall. Um, so that was, I'm, that was, I was very appreciative about that and, um, I know council member Digi Vanna has her hand up again, so go right ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say, I, I would be remiss without saying something about our beautiful mural. Oh, my gosh. And having the woman, and I thank the mayor for having these certificates up here to sign. Look forward to that. And Victoria and the, the kids, what's it called? Grizzy, Grizzly Art, Grizzly Art Club at Jefferson, big shout out. Um, like you said, and to all the partners, Dragonfly, um, the owner of the building, Crusoe, I mean, everyone, it was, if everybody hasn't seen it, please go up there. It's really nice. It's beautiful. And I'm sure this is just the beginning. And, uh, thank you, Mayor. Yes, you're right. It was great. Thank you.
Okay. Other, um, so I think that's it for city council reports, um, item nineteen, staff reports. So I want to hand it over to Mr. Piccolati.
Yeah, I have no staff reports, other than to thank you for, um, forming the committee and our staff has already began working on what to present. We look forward to having that reviewed. Um, other than that, that's it tonight, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Piccolati, for all your hard work. With that, um, we have come down to adjournment and I would like to open the floor to Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It really saddens me that his name is Dr. Tomas Mariano. He's from Tondo, Manila. His wife is Elizabeth. She also is an RN. Uh, she was with Seton for many, many years. Tomas Mariano was in our nuclear lab for over thirty years. Um, he passed away suddenly. He's a father of two sons, both RNs. And I want to let people know that he's someone that, he danced with Grace David every time we had it. He was a love and light. He shared laughter. He was a natural comedian. Um, he always shared the light side. Um, he had just turned sixty-five. We just celebrated his birthday. Um, he didn't have anything other than wear a knee brace and just say that he had a, uh, bum leg sometimes. And to let people know that he was the only one left in his lab. And so he would be on call twenty-four hours a day. And his wife, um, he was helping her take care of her for an illness that she has. And he will be greatly missed. He lived in Daly City for many years and bought a home in Pacifica. And, um, Seton and everybody around, all the nurses, everybody in his family, oh, are nurses. And they came to America with a dream, like he said, and they fulfilled their dream and got their education in the medical field. And he made sure that his kids got one too. So it saddens me Tomas, Dr. Tomas Mariano, on behalf of Grace David and the dance group, on behalf of the Seton Medical, um, people that will be missing him, on behalf of his wife, Elizabeth, and to my friend, I know he's dancing with the angels. So he was only, um, just turned sixty-five. So thank you very much for honoring them. And may we have light, life and laughter and many dances all together. Thank you very much.
Okay, um, so with that, um, I want to close, um, this meeting in an adjournment in memory of Mr. Mariano and I'd like to offer a moment of silence. All right. Thank you, everyone, um, um, for this meeting. Um, and we'll see you all back in October. And I'm hoping and praying it's in person. And hopefully we can, um, get that done. Cause I'm, I'd love to have, um, you know, that person-to-person contact and to see our citizens, um, within the chambers and carry on our conversations and as we end twenty twenty-two in the next few more months. So until then, everybody take care, be safe and have a good night, everyone.